Call the meeting to order. Would everyone please rise? And Councilman Slakka, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We shouted that one.
We did.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman McIntosh. Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilwoman Slakka. Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Councilwoman Simmons. Councilwoman Gibson.
Here.
Councilman Lockhart.
Here.
Okay, and this time, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mayor.
I feel like we're a half hour early or something. What's going on here? Okay, we'll take public comment in this time. I don't see any public out there. Any public? 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 No? No? All right, that's it. Okay, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, it's our pleasure to have the public hearing for the proposed budget for 1415 this evening. What we're going to do is start off with Lisa making a presentation of the budget changes that were made per your direction at the workshop, as well as some additional changes that were recommended by staff in the interim as well. And with that, we're going to have Lisa start off.
Yes, sir.
Hello.
Good morning.
Lisa, before you start.
Yes, sir.
You'll be okay with this. I just want to thank, once again, Lisa, as well as her staff, for the amazing work they've done on this document. And thank again all our directors for handling the money very prudently, of course, under the direction of the council. So, thank you all. All right, Lisa, have at.
Yes, sir. For the record, Lisa Pace, Finance Director. If you all will turn in your packet to page four, that begins our presentation of the summary of budget changes. You will note that the page number to the left is actually a reference to the page number in your July packet, which was also distributed to you as well. The top portion are the revenue changes. The three items that are listed there are all related to the increase in property value that the city received from the June 1st date to the July 1st date. Very positive news. A portion of it is applicable to the downtown and then the remainder to the general fund. And the next section is actually the expenditure changes. You'll see the first portion of that pertain to the general fund. The first item listed under the general fund changes are the planning and zoning personnel additions. You'll note, we've included a detail in a footnote there, footnote number one. Both this item and the Building Department personnel and facility changes under the special revenue, those are related to some additional requests that we received subsequent to your July hearing from our Community Development Department. They have asked for two additional staff members, as listed detailed in the note. One additional staff is for the landscape compliance specialist. I believe you all discussed that at your Wednesday's meeting yesterday. Fifty percent of that position would be funded from the general fund and fifty percent from building fees that are collected from applicants at our Community Development Department. And then the second new position that was requested is for an additional building inspector and plans reviewer. Now, one hundred percent of that person would be funded from the building fees. And that particular position is driven by the activity that is occurring across the street in Community Development. It's really increasing that significantly, and that position will be funded one hundred percent by those fees. They have also requested, they being the Community Development Department, that they be allowed to acquire additional office space. The amount is listed there roughly about thirteen thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars for next year's lease on that. And that will bring the total additions in the Community Development Department for this fiscal year to four. In July, you all tentatively approved a project assistant that would be split fifty percent between the general fund and fifty percent between the building fees, and then an additional plans, building inspector and plans reviewer. And as the activities levels require those two people, they will be added throughout the fiscal year. The next line item is actually, under general fund, is actually code enforcement reorganization. I believe you all are aware of some changes that are going on in that department. Electronic vendor notification, that was specific guidance we had received from your July meeting. Staff has come up with an estimate for that project that has been placed in the budget. Replacement of the dock at Riverside Park. This is actually, was, again, not in your July packet, but subsequent to July, we were informed that that needed to be replaced. So, that is the cost estimate for that. We have included the next line item, Historic Preservation Grant Program at eighty thousand. Again, direction we had received at the last meeting. That brings the total general fund increases to two hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. The special revenue, that we've already spoke about, that's related to the Building Department across the street, funded by the building fees. The next line item, next section, excuse me, for capital projects, those are listed in detail. The first of which, the West Terry Pedestrian Bike Connectivity Construction Manager. You'll see this term, construction manager, listed in a couple of different line items. Staff is requesting that you all allow them to actually contract with the construction manager to help get these projects going next fiscal year. These are projects that you all had indicated that are high priority. You would like to see them begin construction, planning, design, bidding, all that next year. And staff would like to request, again, with government light, to get someone, bring them on just from contractual basis just for these projects to help us with that. And those are the cost estimates that staff have developed for those. The next line item, Benita Beach Road's visionary study. We've got Streetlight Uniformity Project. We also have Landscape Barefoot Beach North in there. We have additional beach and water access acquisition money. We have a fitness room expansion construction manager. Again, as I noted before, the project was previously budgeted. Children's Activity Pool, that is at the direction of City Council. And then, again, we're asking for the assistance of a construction manager for that project to get that underway next year. Lemon Tree Lot Improvements. And then also, the final capital project listed there, Dog Tree, Dog Park Trails and Playgrounds. That brings the total capital projects to seven hundred and forty-one thousand, seven hundred dollars. On your next page, page five, we thought it would be beneficial for everyone to see a summary of the City Council discussion items and other subsequent changes, so that everyone would be aware of the discussion items that required budgetary, that had a budgetary impact, and then ones that did not have a budgetary impact. And so, you would know that we're following up on those. Staff is going to be, you'll hear about those in this next coming year. They just did not have a line item increase, but we wanted to make sure that you were all aware that we took note of those, your direction. The remaining pages that you have in the packet are summary documents that will help you, help us pull everything together. There are two additional changes that we will present to you in your final hearing, which will be September 22nd. Those are, we will be adding an additional construction manager for Riverside Park Boardwalks. That project is in this year's budget. It will be funded by TDC grant funds. But, again, we need the assistance of a contractual construction manager to help us get that underway and get that going. And that would be a city match from park impact fees. Yes, sir? Excuse me, River Park. Oh, thank you very much. Thank you very much. The other item that you will see when you get your final book is, we are going to be, as you guys have, as you all have approved, we have a new accounting software in our finance department. In implementing that software, it has come to our attention that we needed to segregate our impact fee fund. Right now, we have one impact fee fund that contains both roads, community park, and regional park. It's actually going to be more efficient for staff, and it's going to be, we feel, more transparent for you all if we break those into different funds. It will not mean anything to you all from a budgeting standpoint, except for you'll have a couple of different detailed pages that would be able to show you a little more detail about the specific fees. And lastly, for our presentation, we'd like to call up Nicole Perino, Parks and Rec's Director. She is going to give you some detail about the operational impact of adding the children's activity pool. There is no operational impact in the 1415 budget for that, because we do not feel that the pool will actually come online next fiscal year. The planning will start, the construction, and it will come on the subsequent year. So, she's going to give you some details about what you would expect to see in way of additional operational cost for that.
Alrighty. So, I have the numbers as best we can get them based on what we were looking at in terms of what we were wanting to construct. To get you an exact number in terms of operating, we would need to know exactly how big and what size and things like that, which we just couldn't do that in this shorter period of time. But, I do have them very close to what they will be, based on numbers that we've looked at from other area children's activity pools. We did work with Ellis, which is our auditing company for our current pool, and they would, again, of course, audit the children's activity pool. So, they kind of restrict what our staffing levels have to be. So, that number I know is correct. We will have to have, and thank you, Meg and Lisa, for getting these numbers for me, based on fully loaded with benefits and everything that's required. It will be bumping a current employee, Jesse, who is our head lifeguard, to a supervisor position. And then, we would need an additional one full-time person and then five part-time. So, that total cost would be a hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and nine. That's fully loaded for the year. It actually saved us a little bit of money, because just bumping Jesse up was only a difference of thirteen thousand. If I didn't bump him up to a supervisor, Ellis requires a supervisor to cover two pools. If I didn't do that, then I would have had to had two full-time people and five part-time. So, we did save a little bit on cost in having an existing employee get bumped up a little bit. So, that would be your total cost in terms of staffing. In terms of operational cost, what we did was took other pools in the area and how big they are based on gallons and approximated what ours would be. We're looking at our children's activity pool in gallons of thirty-five thousand to forty-five thousand, somewhere around there, based on sizes of the land and how big it would be. So, based on those numbers, we were looking at a total operating cost of fifty-four thousand for the year. Our current pool operating is eighty thousand, so it is less than our current pool, but it is higher than you might expect, because our current pool is a hundred and seventy-three thousand gallons. The difference is shallow water does take more chemicals, so it's harder to regulate shallow water. It's easier to regulate deeper water. Also, in a children's activity pool, everything is flying in the air. So, when that happens, the water dissipates, the chemicals dissipate with it, so then, again, you would have to put more chemicals. So, that's what we're looking at in terms of operating is fifty-four thousand. Staff, again, would be a hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and nine. Any questions for me?
Questions? Yes, go ahead, Jen.
Would there be a cost? I know that this would probably most likely be included in the regular membership, but what about visitors coming, like, for a day that wanted to bring their children? Would there be a cost that could possibly help offset this?
Oh, absolutely. What we would look into in other areas that have two pools, it would be hooked to our existing pool. You would have to still go through in one gate. And we would look at increasing our costs of our daily fees, because currently, it's only a dollar fifty for child, two fifty for an adult. Adding an entirely, another pool, a huge amenity, we would, of course, increase those costs to help offset these fees.
Awesome. Very good. Thank you.
Nicole, at the River Park, which section of the dock needs to be replaced?
Oh, at Riverside? It's the actual dock that's there now, down by the river, by the artist cottages. We did some repairs to that this year, and as we were doing repairs, it really just came down to it needed to be replaced. Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Yes?
And that concludes staff presentation, and we'd like to see if you have any direction for us? Are any questions about what we presented so far?
Counsel, any questions for staff? Yes, Stephen.
Thank you for all your work, all of you, but we were pretty exuberant spending money last time. And I guess the real question is, with the addition of staff, with some staff, have we put a burden on staff that's not going to fit? I mean, we've asked a lot of things to be done in a short period of time.
Well, I think that's a great point, sir, and thank you for asking the question. Because you've probably heard me say a couple of times that I am concerned about trying to get everything done at once. And I know that's probably not the council's expectations, but we wanted to be clear that we could not handle these projects in a timely fashion without asking for additional help. And that's why we have asked for additional money in this budget tonight for construction manager. And what will happen is that person will be tasked, will be brought in on contract only for certain projects, and will be asked to develop the scope of works. We'll obviously be watching over the person, but the scope of work, sending things out to bid, checking the bids, and then actually guiding and monitoring the actual construction activities, so that we can take some of that burden off our current staff and still get the projects done in a relatively timely manner, which I think is what council's intent was.
Okay, because as the mayor often says, there are unintentional consequences, and I think we've probably placed that burden on you unintentionally, but if you have it handled, that's fine.
Well, we do, as long as council will adopt the budget as proposed with the construction manager dollar. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, John, go ahead.
If I could just add a comment to that, and I thank you for bringing it up. We had a discussion with Public Works just this morning on an issue that's related. And I just thought I'd bring it up just to get the issue kind of out on the table. In the past, we've been able to, under certain circumstances, when, for example, during the course of a fiscal year, we learn about a new grant opportunity. In the past, we have, I don't want to say chased those dollars, but we have tried to come up with projects that might fit the criteria for certain grant dollars in order to take advantage of those grant dollars. While we are still very eager to get whatever grant dollars are available, I think the message, at least from internally within staff, is that we're probably going to be doing a lot less of that and a lot more of focusing on making sure that the projects and priorities that you have identified are the ones that we concentrate on. If a grant comes along and one of those identified projects fits, obviously, we're going to try to go after that money. But I think we're probably going to be in a position where we're a little less flexible, maybe, than we had been in the past in terms of moving into items that haven't already been identified in your budget. It's a very ambitious budget. It's one that we want to do our best to try to fulfill for you. But the downside to that is that during the course of the fiscal year, if something new comes up, it will probably be less easy for us to react to that, unless, of course, it's done with full disclosure and you understand that one of the identified priorities might have to move down. So, it's something we're talking about at staff level, just to kind of make sure people don't feel overwhelmed and, you know, intimidated by the amount of work that we have planned out here. It's a great budget. It's a great list of projects, and we're going to do our best to meet them.
And I just want to add that, and I will speak on behalf of staff, we are extremely excited by all of the things we do have on our plate here, because a lot of the things we're talking about, you know, starting with the dog park, you talk about downtown, you talk about the citywide landscaping, you talk about the connectivity study. You take a look at all of those, these are transformational projects. And we're very excited to be here at this time in this city to be a part of it. Absolutely.
I do have a concern with that, and not with the part of, just kind of being victims of our own success. I think that's probably the way of putting it. I think that the city has done well up to this point and will continue to do well. But there's always been, my fear is that, you know, when you grow your infrastructure, whether it's your social, recreational, whatever infrastructure, faster than your capacity to keep up with it with your human resources, well, you grow government. You have to. And we've done a pretty good job keeping that pretty well in check by just, instead of, okay, we have a three million dollar project, do we do it this year? Or do we do it, you know, fifteen million, or one point five million this year, one point five million other year? And that's kind of how we've done it. It doesn't run as fast as a lot of times you want to see that. But there is the danger, and it's really hard to forecast that. I mean, that's the problem. And once you create something like that, it generally doesn't go away, regardless of whether you put on a temporary project manager. With what I see coming in the economy anyway, is he really going to be a temporary project manager? Because there's always another good cause right behind the other one. There is. There's going to be. I mean, that demand for other services and that next favorite project and that next really cool thing is going to keep coming along. If we were one of these cities that had kind of like, no growth or whatever, or if we were someplace like that, it wouldn't be a problem, because you wouldn't be growing the size of your supportive infrastructure. So, it does, I think it's a cautionary tale. I think we can get through this. And at the end of this budget cycle, and then in this year, we take a look at it, and if we see what the consequences are leading us, we just need, we need to be pretty quick on the wheel, I think. Because it could get beyond this. We could be, end up not being government light very quickly. And if I could, if I, there are a couple of things in the, a couple of things not in the capital improvement plan that aren't in there that I think that we're probably going to need to do someday. And I just want to bring this to council's attention and staff's attention. I think staff already knows this. But it's about roads. I know it's your favorite subject. But I was kind of doing kind of some quick math here. And when it comes to north-south corridors, in the last ten years, we have increased our north-south capacity through Benita Springs fifty percent. Adding the lanes to New Forty-One, creating Imperial Livingston, adding I-75, the Old Forty-One, four-laning up that way. We've really increased our capacity that way, so far as our ability to clear traffic through Benita Springs that's coming through or to circulate. However, our east-west corridors, when it comes to, let's say, anything west of Old Forty-One, we have done none. There has been, in the last fourteen years at least, there have been no capacity improvements west of Old Forty-One, which hasn't been. So, you know, is that, is that okay? I don't know. It doesn't kind of look like it. I mean, if you talk about from Imperial Street, we did add the lane to Terry Street, the two lanes to Terry Street. And we have six-lane Benita Beach Road up into that area there to the east of Forty-One, so that connectivity there. But when it comes to our other, you look at east-west corridors, is that all Benita Springs is going to need? We've thought about doing something with Terry Street for a long time. We've never talked about Pennsylvania, heaven forbid. Nobody really wants to see anything happen there other than what's there. And now, we've got, kind of got a plan that, you know, we do have, we want to develop a grand vision for Benita Beach Road. But, again, what does that mean so far as the ability for people to actually get where they want to go? So, I am very anxious to see what some, a study, and hopefully, a really holistic citywide study shows, because I think that, I suspect that there will be some news there for us and something to guide us, because I don't, you know, I certainly am not going to expect council to take my word for it, but, or the people driving up and down the road. But it's just a math thing. I think that at some point in time, we need to be looking towards the future so far as how are people with the growth that's happening east of Benita, how are they going to get down towards, to New Forty-One? How are the people that are on Imperial Livingston, those communities that are growing out there, the communities that are growing on Old Forty-One, how are they going to get east and west? We're not, we're not planning on that at all. So, I'm a little worried. And is there anything in the budget for that that I'm not seeing? I didn't see anything.
I guess as close as I can answer that is that we have already budgeted and planned to do a citywide traffic flow study after Shangri-La Road is open. The idea was get the latest road improvement upgoing, take a look at it in season, see what that did for us overall, and then go from there, see what that teaches us, and then make some projections based on that.
Yeah. I think that's something that we're going to need to be, I mean, whether it's next year or whenever it is, we need to be cognizant of that. And, I mean, we can wish things. We can wish that, you know, we're not going to have any more traffic, or we can wish that the roads are going to keep going the way they are, or whatever. But I think the reality is, is what we don't want to be is a situation that Naples in Collier County was in nine years ago before they started actually building some roads, which is you would go down to Naples and you would literally get trapped there. I recall that really well. I know the people down there do. Before Imperial, before those things, you could get into Naples and you would be stopped down there. And you could, it was a weird feeling not to be able to, there were no alternate routes. You couldn't go anywhere. And that's what people are going to start doing. I know that, is that when it gets to a certain point and you want to go east-west and one road's clogged up, you're going to go north-south, because you can. And you're going to look for that alternate route, so you're going to look for Pennsylvania, you're going to look for side streets, you're going to look for things like that. That's what's going to start to happen. And I'm fearful that the public's not going to like that. And I think that we owe them more than that. So, I'm, counsel, just a cautionary tale, I think, maybe. And we really need, we really need some data, and I trust that any study that we'll do will produce some information. And hey, maybe everything will be fine. Maybe it will show that. So.
Well, we, as John indicated, we do expect to have that holistic study completed after Shangri-La Road is up and going and in season, so we know what's the worst-case scenario. And that should certainly shed some light on the situation now and into the future.
Okay, thank you. And counsel, thank you for letting me rail in there a little bit. Any other comments? Mike?
Go ahead, Mike.
The project managers that we're going to be bringing on, is it going to be one doing all of them? Are they going to be individual? And also, the, there's a, oh, the construction manager.
They will be all different based on the actual project that's being done, because a person for the pool would be different than a person that would do fishing pier dock building, that sort of thing. So, they are different.
Okay. And I saw there was one for West Terry. What's the actual project on West Terry that we're doing with the pedestrian bicycle?
What we're looking at currently that was given to us as a priority was to look at doing a multi-use path along Terry and study the whole entire length of Terry. The Bicycle-Pedestrian Safety Committee that was formed, that was their number-one priority. That's where we also get most complaints in terms of bikers and pedestrians as being not safe, because there isn't currently a bike lane, so we're looking at a multi-use path.
Are we looking at the whole road and everything, or are we just looking at the path on the side of the road?
You would be looking at the road, too. Yeah.
Because that would be east-west.
Yeah.
Good morning, or good afternoon, or good evening and good night, counsel. My name is Matt Feeney. I'm the-
Is he just adjourned?
Happy Saturday.
Public Works Director. Terry Street, this year, we actually looked at it to survey the right-of-way and look at a turn lane at Pine Street. And at the same time, Nicole and the Pedestrian Bicycle Committee were looking at improving multimodal transportation along it. What we found is that in certain areas of Terry Street, which is no surprise, we have limited right-of-way. So, in order to expand it, we need some form of creative solution to be able to accommodate increased pedestrian usage as well as bicycle usage. We also found, in coordinating with Nicole's group, that there are also issues further to the east near Marni Fields where people have connectivity issues. They were actually looking at a pathway, I believe, that went along the power lines to connect people that are using the facility to Terry Street, which doesn't seem very logical when we have Imperial as a connection. It's just how can you safely get the folks to Imperial? So, this study is to look at, with constrained rights-of-way, Terry as a whole, how to improve multimodal connectivity. And I know that's a lot of buzzwords, but it's basically to make it for more pedestrians and bicyclists to utilize Terry safely, with the understanding that we have a constrained right-of-way road.
But we're still looking at like a turn lane for Pine, something like that?
We can incorporate that in the study, but the thought process was that, you know, this would be able to improve some of those congestions perhaps without having to do a turn lane there.
Okay. But so far as capacity improvements, the old-style capacity improvements of being able to convey more cars, you're not going to do anything about that?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay. Counsel? Yep? Yeah, Bill?
Thank you, Ben. I have experienced the Naples circumstance over the years, having went down there many, many times. And yes, it is busy. However, it always seems to- However, it always seems to unwind when the event is over, especially when they have Third Street South blocked or Fifth Avenue. It's never been a serious circumstance for me in past years, and I don't see any reason why the city of Benita Springs should have to be too concerned because of the things that we're already doing. And when does Old Forty-One extend to Collier? Is that next year, the year after? Are we going to do that?
Says nineteen-
I can pretty much tell you it's not next year.
Nineteen twenty?
Good evening again. Old Forty-One, assuming you're referring to the widening of it.
Correct.
We had, we had pushed that project further back in the capital improvement plan with the understanding that we would be working on the downtown and see what effects those improvements would have. Also, to see if the legislature would make any changes that may necessitate the project widening. A big reason for that is we have some drainage for the future widening. We have a shared use agreement with development further to the south, but in the event that the properties right at the intersection of Beach Road and Forty-One were to improve themselves, there would be an opportunity for the city to perhaps partner with them to get some of our road water off there without having to do a taking, which is a very expensive and costly undertaking. So we did push a little further out because those situations don't seem to be changing just yet. And this traffic study that we'll be doing this spring, post-opening of Shangri-La Road, should point us in the right direction as to which improvements we should be looking forward to accelerate.
I might also say, sir, that the Capital Improvements Project Fund indicates that the Old Forty-One four-laning to Collier County line starts to get funded at about the two-hundred, three-hundred thousand dollar range annually, starting in year fifteen, sixteen, as proposed here, which can always change.
Yes.
But we're looking at ten years probably before the thing's fully funded right now, which may be an indication of when we might actually be able to do it. But that can be adjusted, funding rise, depending on some of the variables that Matt talked about.
Thank you, Matt. One other thing, the financial health of the city compared with other places is quite dramatic from my perspective. And the revenues from all sources are in a positive mood, and I would suggest that perhaps there may be some roads bend that even Benita Beach Road, we can always do something. There's always time to do something, but I understand your circumstances in saying that, you know, we really should plan for all these things. But right now, I believe that the circumstances are looking for more mobility for people walking and bikes, and we get all that in place. But we, certainly we can change our, any council can change their circumstances by voting to do something, and I think we can handle that. At least you and I will be here for till sixteen, but after that, we can't tell.
Well, that's true.
So hopefully there'll be enough level heads on the council to work toward a common goal.
Oh, that's what I would hope for today, too. But I do think that, I mean, I do think for us to sit here today and look out five years, and then we've even got years nineteen, twenty, and then two twenty-three to twenty-four, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, for us to look out that far and not have anything there, we've got, for east-west expansion of any kind of capacity? I don't know. I don't know how we can in good conscience even contemplate that. I mean, do we really think, do we as a council think that we will not need any capacity improvements? I'm not talking about the flyover. I'm not talking about Benita Beach Road specifically.
Yeah.
I'm talking about in general. Do we not think that people will want, there will be any more people going east and west on any of these roads? Do we not? Do we, because if we don't think they will, then this is correct. This is A number one, correct. If we think, if we know or we think that there will be a twenty-six percent raise in traffic volumes or whatever there is, I mean, shouldn't we start at some point? So that's the only point I was trying to make.
Your point is well-taken.
Thank you very much.
And I understand it, and we'll have to see.
We will see.
Well, yeah, hopefully.
Well, some of us will. All right. I'll get off my high horse here.
Thanks for letting me ride side saddle there.
Yeah, you got it. Counsel, you have anything else for us here? Anything else? Anything else?
Yes, something needs to happen. What do they need to do next?
Oh, yeah, I got it.
You got it?
Perhaps.
Counsel, we're up to item seven, which is the reading of the resolutions. Per the statutes, you are required to read the resolutions in full. I'll begin the reading of the first resolution. City of Benita Springs, Florida, resolution number, a resolution of the City of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, adopting the tentative levying of ad valorem taxes for the first, for the City of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, for fiscal year 2014, 2015, establishing the date, time, and place for a final hearing to adopt the final ad valorem taxes for fiscal year 2014, 2015, and providing an effective date. Whereas the City of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, on September fourth, 2014, adopted fiscal year tentative millage rate following a public hearing as required by Florida statutes two hundred point oh six five, and whereas the City of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, held a public hearing as required by Florida statutes two hundred point oh six five, and whereas the gross taxable value for operating purposes not exempt from taxation within the City of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, has been certified by the Lee County Property Appraiser to the City of Benita Springs as seven billion, five hundred ninety-eight million, seven hundred eighty-nine thousand, five hundred eighty-six dollars. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, Section One, the fiscal year 2014, 2015, tentative ad valorem operating millage rate for tax calendar year 2014 is hereby adopted at point eight one seven three mils, and the levy of an annual tax for said year is tentatively made. This tentative operating millage rate is greater than the rollback rate of point seven seven three five mils by five point six six percent. Section Two, a public meeting and hearing will be held on September twenty-second, 2014, at five oh one P.M. at the Benita Springs Council Chambers, City Hall, ninety-one oh one, Benita Beach Road, Benita Springs, Florida, to consider and adopt the final millage rate for fiscal year 2014, 2015. Section Three, effective date, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption. At this time, roll call or motion and roll call?
We probably ought to have a motion before the roll call.
I'll second it.
Have a motion, and then there's a second, and this is adopting, for everyone out there, adopting the ad valorem millage rate. Roll call. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longcart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slaugton?
Aye.
Okay.
Duly passed and enacted by the City Council of the City of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, at a public hearing this fourth day of September, 2014. I will now proceed with the second resolution. That was the resolution setting forth the next hearing and scheduling the tentative rate. This is the resolution of the City of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, adopting the tentative budget for fiscal year 2014, 2015, and providing for an effective date. Whereas the City of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, held a public hearing as required by Florida statute two hundred point oh six five, and whereas the City of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, sets forth the appropriations and revenue estimate for the budget for fiscal year 2014, 2015, including expenditures as follows, general fund. Appropriated expenditures, thirteen million, four hundred fifty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars. Appropriated reserves, seven million, nine hundred eighty thousand, nine hundred seventy dollars, for a total of the general fund of twenty-one million, four hundred thirty-eight thousand, five hundred seventy dollars. Special revenue funds, gas tax, three hundred fifty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. Impact fees, seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Grants, eighty thousand dollars. Building fees, one million, nine hundred fourteen thousand, nine hundred dollars, for a total special revenue funds of two million, three hundred fifty-four thousand, nine hundred dollars. Debt service funds of three million, six hundred twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty dollars, and capital project funds of nine million, seven hundred eighty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars, for a total appropriated expenditures and reserves of thirty-seven million, two hundred and five thousand, and forty dollars. Now therefore be it resolved by the City of Benita Springs, City Council of the City of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, Section One, the fiscal year 2014, 2015, tentative budget is hereby adopted, Section Two, effective date, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption. Counsel, your wishes?
Is there a motion?
And I'd be glad to second it.
There is a motion and a second to adopt the tentative budget for the fiscal year 2014, 2015. Everyone, any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longcart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slaugton?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Duly passed and enacted by the City Council of the City of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, at a public hearing this fourth day of September, 2014.
Okay. And at this time, is there any public comment? Didn't think so. I can usually see that from here. Hey, counsel, thank you. Well done, nicely done. Counsel, staff, thank you so much. Excellent job.
Thank you.
Nice adjourn.
Thank you.
If you guys would just, please.